Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our December sixteenth council meeting, our last council meeting for the year of two thousand twenty four. Our first order of business is a call to order and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
The second item on our agenda is the reading of the sunshine statement and roll call by Mrs. Lauren Stats for municipal clearly.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings law. This meeting of December sixteenth, two thousand twenty four was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the courier. On January eighth, two thousand twenty four, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website. On December thirteenth, two thousand twenty four, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty four. And has remained continuously posted as required under notice under the state statute. Mayor Solento?
Present.
Council President Albertson?
Present.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Sigmund?
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Okay, next up on the agenda is a reading of a proclamation. Recognizing the Denon Police Department for their one hundredth anniversary this year for two thousand twenty four. So we have members of the Police Department with us, and if we can step forward, we have a proclamation and a plaque for you. Put this over here, so we take photos. There's no one. Chief, you want to know that? Okay, so every good proclamation, we give it a readout and. I guess there's no better proclamation to read for the last one of the years than celebrating the police department, right? So celebrating the one hundredth anniversary of Denon Police Department. Whereas the Denellen Borough Police Department was formally established in August nineteen twenty four with Chief Owen Moen. Along with Patrolman Patrick Tarpe. Tarpe and Samuel Strickland, forming the foundation of law enforcement in Denellen. And whereas the Denellen Borough Police Department. Has exemplified the borough's commitment to public safety by standing up, staying up to date with the latest trainings and incorporating innovative. Measures for effective law enforcement initiatives. And whereas over the last century, the Denellen Borough Police Department has evolved into a highly respected law enforcement agency. Remaining dedicated to its mission of protecting and serving the residents, businesses, and visitors of Denon. While fostering community partnerships and ensuring public safety. And whereas the Denellen Borough Police Department, which has grown from its humble beginnings with just three officers. To the modern professional force it is today, and it's continuing to grow. Has demonstrated unwavering courage, professionalism, and commitment to the borough. And whereas this milestone provides an opportunity to reflect on the legacy of those who have served and honor their contributions to the safety and well being of the borough of Denellen. While looking ahead to the bright future of the department and generations of Denon Police Officers to come. Therefore, be it resolved that I am Mayor Jason F. Solento, along with the Borough Council. And the entire borough of Denon congratulate the Denellen Borough Police Department on celebrating their hundredth anniversary. And commend them for their dedicated service to the borough of Denellen over the last century. Dated this sixteenth of December, two thousand twenty four, underneath my signature. So congratulations, guys. Thank you. Counsel, do you want to join in a photo? We're counseling. Hey. Next up is item number four on the agenda, the approval of our regular meeting minutes from December second, two thousand twenty four. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Any comments, additions, or redactions as they currently stand? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Item number five on the agenda. Should we technically even be introducing an ordinance?
That's a good point. Typically, you would want to introduce it at the beginning. Year so that you not go over terms unless there's an urgency to this. Carry. There's some urgency on it. I think the concern is that it's going to be term starting for January, maybe new. Members who may not have sooner introduced it.
It's not changing.
A changing, so if there's an urgency to it. Think it would be acceptable, but it'd be better practice typically to carry to the beginning of the term.
So if council's okay, we can move it, we can introduce it on January first. Okay.
Sounds good.
This is solicitation, right?
No, no, this one is the end of the half, hardly space on question.
It, well, I will pause. Is there an urgency for this resident? Because I don't want to.
Well, I told them that it would be introduced.
So let's, if council's comfortable, let's vote on it then, in terms of introducing, and then it would be.
At the January twenty first meeting.
It would be publicly heard and adopted?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we don't do that type of business January first.
So even if we were introducing on January first, then we'll find for the. Just because you've committed to the resident, let's just, again, we'll, we'll do it today. Because the council's not changing. Kind of a motion in second on introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty three.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Okay. It's an introduced ordinance, so we don't discuss. It'll be publicly heard and adopted at the January twenty first meeting, yeah, because the twentieth is a Monday. It's President's Day inauguration. No, Martin Luther King's Day, I apologize, and inauguration. So, okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay, item number six on the agenda is the adoption of ordinances. We have twenty twenty four dash thirty two. Can we have a motion on it in ordinance to repeal and replace entirety of chapter? Two eleven peddling and soliciting part two, general legislation of the Denon Borough Code.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
This is an ordinance dealing with solicitation and the process in which it will be handled moving forward. So with that, we'll open the floor to the public. If you have any comments or questions solely to twenty twenty four dash thirty two. Please state your name and address, and the microphone is all yours, or online, you can address your comments. Is that somebody talking? Oh, it's a radio? I thought the sound online was, okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and we'll open the floor to mayor and council for discussion solely on twenty twenty four dash thirty two.
Yes, just for public knowledge. Would this also affect political campaigning?
This excludes political campaign and nonprofits and religious entities. This is mainly for for profit entities that would have to fall underneath this, although I would. Hope that those other organizations such as a campaign, a religious organization, or nonprofit. If they see the decal on someone's property, they would respect that and not knock on that door. But in terms of following the procedure of lists and P, they're excluded.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions pertaining to this? Without hearing any, we'll take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Okay. Item number seven on the agenda is resolutions. Mrs. Stats will read through them and give mayor and council an opportunity to discuss them.
Resolution number three forty six is to pay the bills.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number three forty seven is adopting an amendment to the personnel policies handbook procedures.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
The main change to this is for any employees hired after December thirty first of two thousand twenty four, they are no longer. Entitled, thank you, that's the right word, to longevity. That's being removed underneath this.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number three forty eight is to hire winter staff basketball coaching for the recreation department.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number three, three forty nine is to approve a service contract between Animal Control Solutions LLC and the Borough of Denellen.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mr. Miller, can you speak to this?
Yes, Mayor. In the past three years. Edison Animal Control was to provide service to the borough, and in summer time, they informed us that they were no longer. Working with outside towns. Basically, they cut ties with. Publicly disappalled, it's a hot thing. I'm walking into the town, not sure which is his town. In search of companies that help us out with this situation. Lot of. Lot of facilities or organizations. Don't want to deal with it out of the south. It was actually excellent. They need, they need Frank when Frank reached back, not back before. I tried to go to Greer Rock and ask who they use, and they use this company, they use that. But they're being lined by three or four different agencies. This company is the one that came on the time. And they, they. Were it was a, they were forty nine different now.
And I see they, they, the contract falls underneath the bid threshold, but you got other bidders. I know in terms of the news, and I believe it's all allegations, so I'm not speaking on legal fact, Edison, there was issues with Edison as a shelter in general, so I actually think it's good news that we're leaving. But so in terms of knowing that. They, they come highly recommended by the towns that you spoke to.
I spoke to Kelly, the DA. And Greer Rock, she's so hot, she actually. Agency, and they came with a very.
Okay. And I think if council were to approve this tonight, I think just so residents. Understanding something get placed on the website that we no longer use Edison, this is the services, and maybe get something into the Denon report and an email blast, just so people know not to call Edison. Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, so if it's in Flemington, how does that work? If they're, so they're based out of Flemington, is there somebody local, or do they have to come all the way from Flemington?
Well, they, like you said, they work with properties, Greer Rock, so they're always around. So, you know, like you said, they're forty nine, they could be disappalled, but they work with. I think they, so they're likely.
I just, I feel like some residents will think that, oh, well, they're coming forty five minutes away, that's going to take a while. What do I do with the animal? So that's just my concern. Thank you.
Okay, take a roll call.
Okay. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number three fifty is to approve a shared services agreement between the Borough of Denellen and the Denellen Board of Education for a school resource officer.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund. Rios, Sigmund. Yeah, so I think this is a, with Sergeant Chin at the time, he was a school resource officer's retirement, we've. We've lost that position, so this is the efforts to renegotiate that contract and. Bring back a school resource officer on top of what their security. Officer is currently on staff, Jason, I've met him, he's a good guy. So I think this is important for public safety, the safety of our children. I personally believe in hardened schools, so I think this is important for safety. So. This was a several weeks to a couple months negotiations, and so this is. The product of that, so I just want to extend thanks to Alex Miller, Bill Robertson, Chief, Chief Smith, Lauren, and the team that was really strong on getting this together. This council's had time to review this, but I will note for the record, because there was an amendment before. The council meeting that council member Lance brought to our attention, I think it was a good recommendation, so we added it here, so for council's consideration, underneath duties. We added H, that the officer may be requested by the superintendent or his designee to assist with traffic flow and enforcement during morning drop off and afternoon pickup on and around school grounds. Because that was not on the duties, so I think that was a good recommendation, we did add it. And so that's on the floor for council to consider as the overall package of an agreement. Okay. I think that's a great amendment.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark. Resolution three fifty one is to authorize the transfer twenty twenty three appropriation reserves to accounts payable.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay. Item number eight on the agenda is consent agenda. We have items, resolutions three fifty two through three seventy. So council, take a moment to review. And let us know if there's any resolutions you'd like to pull out and speak separately before we take a consent agenda roll call.
Three fifty five.
Okay.
Any other ones, just?
Okay, so.
We could take a vote for the rest of the content bill, is that how it works?
Yes, motion second on the rest of the agenda with the exception of three fifty five. Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, you do it. I'm already at a German section.
Mrs. Albertson? Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
It's okay. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah. Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion in second on resolution three fifty five? Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Okay, council member, would you like?
Are we doing a limit on how many residents? Are like, like, what if all of Denellen wants chickens?
Well, that, I think the ordinance would be their right.
Yes.
We limit the number of how many.
How many chickens?
Yes.
It's five chickens.
And no roosters.
Yeah, no roosters. I think it's.
I wanted to just clarify that. Okay.
And they're all inspected, George went and inspected their coops. In the past week, and they all passed.
So, yes, fantastic.
And we do that every single year.
I have one question. Are any of these new this year that haven't already been approved? I guess the number of houses growing.
I think one was added last year. But only four, so it started out with just one, and then each year, like one or two. Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
One more question, sorry. Is this like a swimming pool thing where they have to be fenced in, you know, like?
Yes, so the ordinance, and I know by, because I remember when this was happening, we were, it was being proposed by the clerk at the time that we not allowed chickens at all, and. We apparently have a growing, at the time, we had a growing organic chicken community, apparently. So I was getting emails about, you know, you're going to kill my chicken. But then many of them went ahead and killed their chicken for food, but anyway. So it's basically, you have to treat this like as if it's like a shed in your backyard, they have to be cooped, and it has to be certain distance from your neighborhood property.
And when George goes around, we have a checklist, and he marks everything up on the checklist to make sure it's proper.
I'm just asking about the fencing in because of animals coming in. That's the only reason I would think that it would have to be fenced in, but.
If you want to read ordinance twenty sixteen dash oh eight, could, you know, you can read up on it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any more questions? Okay, we'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine on the agenda is council reports. Council President Albertson.
Very brief, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holiday. Stay safe, stay well, and enjoy the new year.
Amen.
Council member Rios?
Yes, Denellen Public Library. Join us at December twenty third at one P M for a festive Christmas movie party. Registration is required. Come celebrate Hanukkah on December twenty sixth at ten thirty A M with a special storytime for children ages one through six. Holiday closures to keep in mind, the library will be closed December twenty fourth and twenty fifth for Christmas, and we will also close early on December thirty first. Board of Education upcoming events, December seventeenth, Board of Ed meeting at seven thirty, Lincoln Middle School. December eighteenth is the L M S D H S Winter Choir Concert. December twentieth is early dismissal. December twenty third through January first is district close for winter break. And January seventh is their reorganization board meeting. The, where am I? Denellen Rec. Annual Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony. The annual Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony took place on Friday, December sixth at six thirty at Washington Memorial Park. It was. It is always a special night in Denellen. It took so many wonderful people to take, to make this beautiful night happen. Thank you to mayor and council for supporting our programs. Special thanks to all involved, Mayor Solento. Ceremony countdown for the tree lighting, rec commission for all your subsistence with the event, Carl Geiger and the. Fifth grade choir, wonderful job, Imperial Brass Band, all the Denellen EMS Fire Department Rescue Squad. O E M search team and Police Department, Mike Loosman, thank you very much. Santa around town, another Denellen classic tradition on Christmas Eve. Our fire department will escort Santa around town. This year, we will start on the south side of town, starting at ten A M. Be sure to listen for the sirens. Annual Senior Citizen Holiday Party. This year's party will occur on Sunday, January nineteenth. At one thirty at the Denellen Firehouse. Any seniors interested in joining can call the Recreation Department. As always, Recreation Department would love to have the mayor and council join us at this party. Winter Flag Football. Flag football, when youth flag football has begun, began with a ten week program. Is led by parent volunteer and high school football players. Registration is still open, and there's still space available. To register, visit our Denellen Parks and Rec website. Recreation Basketball. This eight week program for children is in kindergarten, grades kindergarten through sixth will begin Saturday, January fourth. Basketball will take place on Saturday morning at Baber Gym. There is still space available. You can register online at Denellen Parks and Rec dot com. And I just want to wish all of Denellen a joyful holiday season filled with warmth, peace, peace, and togetherness. Here's to cherished traditions and a bright new year. Thank you.
Okay, very nice. Council member Vandermark. Okay, thank you, sir. Council member Lance?
Yes, for buildings and grounds. The Viking Security Call Box System for entry to the Police Lobby and Chambers Court is now fully operational. The side door will automatically lock at five P M and unlock at eight A M. On evenings when council meetings, planning board meetings, or court sessions are held, the doors will lock at nine P M. Additionally, the system includes call boxes located both inside and outside the police lobby, which are monitored by Somerset County Dispatch around the clock. Some updates throughout Borough Hall. Plans for further security enhancements are being made. Alex Miller recently held a meeting with representative from J One Door Company regarding the replacement of the doors. At the Office of Urgency Management and the Recreation Office. During this discussion, they outlined the plans for the project, which is scheduled to take place in mid-January. Winterization has been successfully completed at McCoy Columbia Park and Washington Park to protect unoperated facilities and irrigation systems from harsh winter conditions. And for the Denellen Arts and Inclusion Culture Commission, they've already start transformed several business storefronts with festive winter displays that celebrate the season. Passersby can enjoy snow covered landscapes, cheerful snowmen, and twinkling holiday lights. We encourage residents and visitors to explore the town and support local businesses, and that's all.
Thank you. Council member Sigmund? Yes, I just want to clear my throat and then. And then wish everyone a safe and jolly holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Scott?
So for DPW, they continue weekly lawn and landscape maintenance at Borough Parks and Properties, leaf cleanup. At the Borough Parks and Properties, cleared the catch basin lids. Leaf bag pickup throughout the borough, and a reminder, they're going to continue picking up through the end of the year, two more weeks, so it's coming soon. Remove debris from the trash trap in the creek. The crew walked the streams, cleared debris from the stream after the last few rain events, and I'm sure this week there'll be more. Finished installing the Christmas decorations. And for the mechanical division, they service the police fleet as they come up for maintenance or breakdowns arise. Service the DPW equipment as they arise issues for maintenance. Service the large salt spreader, prepare for winter, clean and adjust the chain, lubricate grease and bearings. Repair to the DPW pickup truck for a faulty plow lighting module. Installed a new leaf vacuum on unit two and repaired leaf equipment as issues arise with daily usage, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. My report, volunteer applications are, they're still open for terms starting in two thousand twenty five. They're open until Friday, February, December twentieth, I'm already skipping ahead, geez. I, I believe that volunteering your time is one of the greatest gifts you can give, so think about that during the holiday season. And I'm grateful for the count, and I know the council members are grateful for the countless volunteers here in Denon who generously give back. By serving on our many commissions, authorities, and boards. So we proudly offer many opportunities for individuals who are interested in getting involved through many of our commissions, which you can find on the website at Denellen-nj.gov. Through many of our commissions, which you can find on the website at denellen-nj.gov backslash volunteering, or you can come to Borough Hall and apply in person if If you're still a pen and paper kind of get person, so. Um. We invite you to join us on Sunday, December twenty-ninth at six P M at Washington Memorial Park for menorah lighting celebration. Come together as you celebrate the warmth and light of the season with a brief history of Hanukkah, followed by the lighting of the menorah, and I believe the Chabad of New Brunswick will be uh leading those efforts. On Thursday, December twelfth, um, I had the honor of attending the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association's two thousand twenty-four Planning Excellence Awards and Great Places in New Jersey at the South Orange Performing Arts Center. Um, I was joined on stage by the Denellin Downtown Management Organization and Arts Denellin Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission Member and Volunteer Heidi Helleniak. Uh, and Billy George, our Communications Coordinator, joined us as well. Uh, we accepted the Great Downtown Award on behalf of the Borough of Denellin. This annual award program recognizes the people, plans, projects and places that embody the power of great planning to create vibrant, healthy, equitable and sustainable communities across New Jersey. So just extend a thank you to D M R Architects, N W Financial, McManam and Scotland and Baumann, C M E Associates, Wendell Marks, Lane and Mittendorf. King Mention Collins, L L P, Gabe Gay, Baylor, who Actually submitted us to be considered. Former Mayor Robert J Cedar, uh, and current and former council members. Um, the Denellin Planning Board Business Administrator Alex Miller, our former administrator, Bill Robbins, Director of Community Development Director, uh Derek White. The D D M O, the Denellin Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission. Um, there's a lot of people to thank that made that journey possible. The Parking Authority, our borough employees, volunteers, residents and business owners and all who have had a hand in the incredible progress of our Miracle Mile. And all the efforts we've, we've accomplished. So it's, it's uh It's nice to be recognized by the state and state organizations. We also will be featured in New Jersey Real Estate Magazine, so that's coming up in the next several months, so. Um. Denellin is on the map and uh it's been a shared vision and community effort to get us there, so kudos to everyone involved. Um. And you actually, you know what? Yeah, I saw you applaud. That does seem to be over a random of guys. A redevelopment town hall. Last Wednesday, we hosted our annual mayoral town hall on redevelopment in Denellin. If you're, if you were unable to attend, have questions about redevelopment in Denellin, I encourage you to watch a recording of the event, which is available on the Borough of Denellin YouTube channel. It's titled Denellin Social Media. As the presentation provides important details on our revitalization efforts, I'd like to thank everyone who attended in person or virtually, and a special thank you to our panelists, um, which They'll be in the meeting or minutes, so I'll put them in there. Um, there's just a lot of people, but thank you to all of them. You can see their names on the If you watch the YouTube, um. Drone updates. Uh, we are continuing to monitor the situation involving the drones that have been seen flying throughout the state. Um, while they have not officially been reported through the Denellin Borough Police Department, Numerous accounts of sightings have been reported in Denellin that we've noticed based upon uh social media conversations. An official briefing from the New Jersey State Police and New Jersey Office of Homeland Security and Preparedness stated that if you witnessed this suspicious activity, Your drone activity, it should be reported to the N J O H S P's uh counter threat watch unit at eight six six Uh, four seven two three three six five or email tips at N J O H S P dot gov and if needed through local dispatch, which that is uh seven three two nine six eight three thousand extension zero. Please do not dial nine one one unless it is a true emergency. Please, if you see one of these and you want to notify local officials, please dial the non-emergency line unless it is clearly life-threatening. The Department of Homeland Security and FBI have to Deploy drone detection technology and infrared cameras to determine the origin and nature of these drones. The FBI is leading and is the leading agency in investing in these, in get investigating these sightings. Uh, state and federal officials have noted that there is currently no evidence of a threat to public safety, But it's still important to report these sightings to the proper authorities so they can be investigated. Uh, we will continue to provide updates as more information becomes available uh to us. Um, okay? Some good news, um. Borough of Denellin was awarded uh four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a North Avenue Improvement Project, Uh, which is basically uh the North Avenue Streetscape Improvement, which one, which will Com- complete the decorative lighting that we see in the downtown from uh Jackson all the way to the Plainfield border. We also received an N J D O T State Streets Program uh grant for six hundred and forty-six thousand, um. It's to uh basically to go towards the replacement of sidewalks along the entirety of South Washington Avenue. Um, so this program will get new sidewalks along South Washington Avenue and the goal of the program is basically safe routes to transit. Um. And South Washington is one of the key routes to walking and lighting to the train station. Sanford Avenue, we received four hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars in grants from the N J D O T to do work there. Um. While the grants for these projects have been awarded for two thousand twenty-five fiscal year, it is important to note that their completion follows a two-year cycle due to the timeline and financial obligations Of projects that are currently underway. So while we have the funding net, we we got the grant funding Just due to, like I noted, uh financial obligations and timelines to grants that were in the pipeline before them. It usually is a two-year timeline before these projects are done. Um, just want to be transparent about that. So, good news is between these three grants, that totals just over one point five million dollars in the last three months. Um, which is pretty good for a square mile town of only about eight thousand people. And um, I think that now between grants from the state over the last five years and technical assistant grants puts us just around ten million dollars over the last five years in grants, so. A significant amount for our little borough. And I do credit, because we survey the community often and we work with state agencies that do technical assistant grants and help us with reporting and data collection. And why we, and also having the climate resiliency plan that we did, we create um really good applications that the state appreciates. Um, it was funny, I was getting uh emails from one of the state assemblymen down in Closer to South Jersey going, here, your town's getting money left and right. What's going on? So I gave him the advice of what Denellin does is we, we talk to our community members and we make sure that we Engage them and develop policy around what the community actually wants. Um, so our engineers report uh downtown wayfinding signage plans and sign details have been modified due to the M U T C D requirements regarding traffic and pedestrian signage. The documents have been up the uh uploaded to P M R S for local aid review and C M E has received initial review comments from the N J D O T and the Highway Occupancy Permit Acumenca- Application. It's also been submitted. Uh, Klein Place, um, the contractor attempted to complete the remaining work on the project. However, further corrective work uh is required. I will note to the council and the public, um, there, after the work was done, it was creating almost a a pitch down in the road, so it was puddling. Um. The contractor came in to do corrective work without notifying us, the engineer or the residents. So it was quite the surprise when people were calling saying the road is being torn up. Um, but uh, from my understanding, we're not satisfied with what was left behind and we are going to be sending um Through the engineers and if needed legal, uh, the requirement that they fix it to what it was done to, so. Just so the residents in Klein Place and Pearl and J Doc and Kennedy understand, we're not gonna let it be left that way. Same thing with Oak around Maple. It's starting to flake up a little bit, so we're in communications with American Water to ensure that they hold the contractor accountable to fix that area too. Um, fortunately, when you do this work, it does happen. It's just a matter of how do we react and hold those accountable to actually fix it the way it should be fixed. Uh, Washington Avenue Street Lighting, the project has been awarded and C M E is coordinating the approval of the award with the N J D O T Local Aid. Uh, Second Street Phase One, the project's been awarded, C M E is coordinating the approval of the award with N J D O T Local Aid. Roward Culvert, a meeting was conducted with I thank to discuss the project status and issues. Um, we are requesting a meeting uh with the Army Corps of Engineers of the Status Project of the Greenbrook uh Blood Control Project. Uh, the infamous strip joint six thirty-five Bound Brook Road demolition contract should be bid upon completion of the building assessments, and once that done, we'll see that building come down, then we can start the process for mediation before the rescue squad can Uh, get the appropriate finance to build their building that they proposed. Um. C M E continues their, their discussions with uh P S E and G on the light conversions. As we noted, we're gonna keep them, we're gonna make them LEDs. It's an ongoing conversation just because there's costs associated to it, so we need to consider what that's going to go into a new budget year. Um. C M E continues to monitor work being performed by Comcast, uh, so we do have our engineers on the ground. Um, if anybody wants updates on Comcast, please follow our social media platforms and also we have a section on our website. If you see concerns, please report it. Um. They should be notifying the residents before they come in and do work. If they're not, let us know officially. Um. We don't always go to Facebook for our news, so you need to let us know, um, so we can handle it accordingly. Um. Uh. We uh, we did discuss with C M E, was a part of a meeting with some stakeholders in the administration to discuss conditions of sanitary sewage system and potential funding of improvements to accommodate Redevelopment and everything, so uh, that's an ongoing conversation that'll be brought to, back to council for discussion. And budget letters were submitted for South Washington Avenue, New Market Road Pedestrian Improvement, the Bound Brook Road Streetscape Improvements and the Borough R R F B Uh, improvements. That was the local aid grant we got for hundred and seventy thousand and Actually, I apologize that what one of part, part of that is, um, but uh, so that will be discussed in our budget conversations before the budget is presented. Okay, um, I hope everybody joins us on January first uh at twelve P M for our annual reorganization meeting. Um, don't party too hard the night before. Um, it's a lovely day and we have a Lunch at the Denellin Hotel that everybody at the meeting is welcome to join, um, if you're at the meeting. Um, uh, council member, President Albertson and Councilmember Bill Scott will be Resworn in and um, it's, it's a fun time reorganizing our government, so everyone is welcomed. You'll hear the state of the borough address here, what we did in two thousand twenty-four and some plans for two thousand twenty-five. Um, council, just so you're aware, working on com- uh committee assignments. Um, I would recommend going into two thousand twenty-five That at minimum, the chairs meet with their committees at least quarterly to discuss with department heads their needs, their wants and just kind of where they're at throughout the year. Um. If you do that, great. If not, please do that. Think it's important. Um, and if you're doing it quarterly, it's only four times. If you think about it, you should and could be doing it more, but just keep at least quarterly in mind. And uh, I'll just conclude with wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and holiday season and a happy and healthy prosperous new year. We uh will be sharing over the next week or two, the year in review as we normally do the graphic of what we accomplished this year. Um. I, I will say we accomplished a lot. We're small, but we're a mighty town and I'm very thankful to be your mayor and get to serve alongside such great public servants. Uh, from council to volunteers to our borough staff and people like Mr. Locke who work in a different authority, but we enjoy working with you. And uh, but thank you everyone for your service and I look forward to working with you and seeing you in two thousand twenty-five, so a happy and prosperous new year and uh Let's do some good work. Okay. Where are we at? Number ten, department head reports. Legal?
Uh, thank you, man. No report.
Okay. Clerk?
No report tonight.
Administration?
Uh, there's a follow-up on my question. When the contract was paid in, we tried to fix the low spot in the uh road. Uh, they were, they were informed by the state's grid area, so our engineer will be setting them um. That's a process that should have certain things. So whether it was a cut in the grid or whatnot, it's gotta be. So, no cutting. Um. And Thanks to Chief and As you said, Chief, you know, and yourself, we're all fully involved with the S R O. Took a while to get it fully finalized, but Lot of hard work and thank you much. And we'll also need to bring it up from N M O U that she probably worked with the school. Um, security And then our attorney, Bill, we worked on the school that, um. The police haven't accessed the cameras. Something that came up, we'll be back prior, uh, to show we do that. That's where there's emergency. We don't want a police going to do it, they fly. But that's where you come to my, very soon.
Okay. Thanks, thank you. I T?
Uh, just quick stuff, um. So past police, we had a good amount of like lightning events that we hosted, such as the Washington Boulevard Christmas Tree Lighting, the George will be like the fire opening and uh redevelopment on the hall. Uh, we didn't have to do some viewerships on it for the Royal Park Lighting. We had thirty-six views, the fire was reopening, sixty-nine views and the redevelopment sixty.
Nice, thank you. Police Department?
Go for it.
Anything from Parking Authority?
Functioning.
Chaplain, anything from Fire Department? Fire Company?
Um, the opening presentation for a lot. Appreciate everybody. Uh, afterwards, I know we did a A rehab, trying to see George and present it for his family there. Under some power, and you all did presentation points that we had. And most happy, happy that and started banking there.
God bless them. Thank you. Okay. At this moment in time, we will, it's item number eleven on the agenda, public comments. Um, we'll Open the floor to the public. We'll go first who's in chambers. We just asked that you please state your name and address. Okay. Any members online? Please state your name and address. None. One last general blanket. Anybody joining us either in person or virtual, please state your name and address. Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Um. Before we close out the meeting and next year's agenda, you're gonna see something called new discussion. Um, we just asked, there'll be a procedure that if council members, and it's always, council members have always had the opportunity to bring something to Council discussion, but we'll place it on the agenda as a, just a Placement, so people know that they are able to, uh. I would, I think the Lauren and the administrator would just appreciate prior to, you know, any new discussion, you just email them for whatever you're gonna request to be on the agenda, at least a week or two in advance, so, okay? With that, You have to take the last opportunity of two thousand twenty-four to gavel if we have a motion and a second on resolution three seventy-one to adjourn our Two thousand twenty-four Borough Council season. Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any nays? Only one still, okay. Thank you, everyone. God bless you. Happy New Year and uh we'll see you January first, two thousand twenty-five for our annual.